Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands our nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That usually comes after. Okay, roll call. Mr. Crokerview and Mr. Bittner are not present tonight. First, uh, public comment, any public comment? Seeing none, um, we'll go into our first order of business, A&R plans, we've got one for 787 New West Townsend Road.
So, probably not easy to see on that little map, but ninety-nine percent of this land is in the city of Fitchburg. There's a small triangle of land that is, uh, it's probably about fifteen hundred square feet that provides frontage to, uh, one of the lots is in the town of Lunenburg, uh, so there's a small division of that triangle of land. Uh, it puts like fifty square feet on one lot and the remainder on another lot.
This, this little tiny sliver is-
Yeah, this little tiny sliver, and there's a little property line that goes through it right there, and the sliver extends just a little bit. So, in order to do that, he has an A&R signed by the city of Fitchburg on the remainder of the land, and because there's that little portion within the town of Lunenburg, we also need to sign the A&R.
Okay. Um, no issues?
Nope.
Should be no issue because it's-
Lots of frontage meets in both communities. Fitchburg has signed it where they hold the majority of it, and we would just be signing that it's a continuation of administrative review.
So, we just need a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve the A&R as submitted.
Second? Excellent, um, all in favor?
But you're supposed to have it asked for a discussion, technically, right?
Is there any discussion?
Nope.
No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Signing it? Yeah.
This is a recording form for the registry of deeds, so if the court of admirers please return this to the planning office.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
We can sign those at the end, right? We can, oh.
Oh, the paper on the deeds.
Do you have any A&R's? Do you have any A&R's?
I don't know. Well, there's one right here, sixty-four White Street.
Oh, there's one sixty-four.
Our next A&R is two nine two Chase Road. I didn't see any info, have we seen that already?
This is Lonnie Orchards. Um, this is the A&R of the-
A design group package?
Yes. This is the division of the commercial property and the houses from the APR land. Uh, it was before the board previously, uh, and actually, no, it never got to the board. It was reviewed previously and turned back due to Board of Health issues. The Board of Health has met with the applicant, uh, and has said that they are comfortable with the design as it is and are willing, and have said that they, they don't have any opposition to signing it, uh, and that in the future, uh, they would need to meet Title V regs should they need to update or alter the system. But they have authorized, uh, the moving forward of the, the division. So, this is going to retain, or remain in the ownership of the Lonnie family. They're receiving an, uh, APR payment for the rear land, uh, with the orchards and the cornfields and the pumpkin patch and whatnot. APR doesn't pay for houses, and at this time, they've chosen to remove that commercial structure, uh, so that will not be part of the APR land, so the APR will be the bulk of the, I think it's ninety-seven or ninety-eight acres. Uh, I think it ends up being an APR of like ninety-four acres, uh, with the, uh, house property and the, the store property removed.
Okay, this is saying the locust is eighty point eight and that the APR was seventy-one, seven?
Seventy-seven point one.
Okay, then I, then I had my numbers wrong.
I didn't understand that they could do the APR before the subdivision, or that they-
They can't, they're waiting for the signature of the A&R to find, oh, they haven't been paid as of yet.
Yeah, this is just dividing it into A and B so that A can be put into APR.
Correct.
And, could you say something about the garage that's on the APR land?
The garage? That's the building, I believe you said was going to be removed?
No, the commercial, the commercial building, their little, their little stand out on Chase Road.
They're gonna have to remove that?
No, not, the building doesn't need to be removed. That property is being removed from what's being counted in the APR. So that in the future, they could do something else on that property. Uh, if they included it in the APR, it would have to continue to be associated with retail for the orchard and other agricultural products per the, the APR agreement.
Okay, but there's no restriction on having the garage on APR land?
No, no, you, you can have structures that are associated with agricultural production on APR land. Um, I mean Stillman's, I think, is in APR, and they've got cow barns and milk processing and all of that, because it's all part of what the agricultural products are.
Yeah. All right, that looks okay to me. I move that we approve the A&R as documented.
Second? Excellent, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And we're cooking with gas. You gotta sign too.
Uh-oh. It's in the sneaky spot.
So, this is, uh, um-
Or I'm not as persnickety about where they put the signature block as previous. Players.
Okay?
Can I scan it?
You certainly may. Thank you.
Why don't we do them separate so they stay not getting smeared? Thank you.
Did you dig, did you dig for the-
And our third A&R plan is one six four White Street.
That's correct, this is, um, a plan that you had divided not two years ago. Uh, this is Alan Foster's property. Uh, previously, the land was divided into two lots, um, one that retained the existing house and one that was proposed to be a buildable lot, uh, of extensive size. Mr. Foster's, uh, changed his mind and would like to recombine them. So, it's, it's really a lot line erasure.
Where, where was the secondary lot?
Uh, it had, so-
It seemed to be-
It was Lot A.
Which, but the left side of that wall, correct?
It was on the, if you're looking-
Was it that?
Yeah, it was, I think the edge of the pond is the lot, and it went back and cut across. No, I'm sorry, it was just this little front piece here.
Yeah.
It was the, it was on, it was on one side of the impoundment on the corner of, um-
On the corner of Pearl Brook and White Street?
Yes, and so now that-
Separated by that brook?
Correct, now that whole thing will be all part of one lot.
Oh, it's the outlet structure, okay, yeah.
He retained the, the dam as he had historically maintained, and, uh, was looking for someone to purchase the house that would continue to do so, and has decided to retain the house and combine the lots back into one.
I'm somewhat familiar with the property, and I thought that little piece behind those two lots on the left of White Street, I thought that was a separate lot where that little gravel driveway is.
I think that it is, but I think it was separate from this A&R.
Okay.
He's got two Lot As on here, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I thought the, the division previously created two lots, and that gravel driveway was his, and it was his secondary driveway to this back garage, and he had cut off this lot over on Pearl Brook.
So, there are two different parcels that say other land of, of Foster. So, there's this one-
Trying to find Lot One and Lot Two on this document, I don't see them.
So, that'd be a third.
I see it's Lot A.
Correct, so that this one attaches to here. So, it's actually one parcel. So, the parcel comes up here and wraps around.
There's Lot One and Lot Two, is this Lot One and this is Lot Two?
Okay, yeah, okay, the part that's separating them.
Lot One and Lot Two is what's referenced in the plan reference.
Oh, okay.
Lot A is comprised of two contiguous lots, Lot One and Two.
Lot One and Lot Two shown on the plan book, but there's no Lot One and Lot Two designation on this document.
Oh, hmm, you know, I think, I think I may have been incorrect. The division actually was, Lot One was being created, and that was, you're right, this one behind the other two, and the house was going over towards, from the paved driveway over to Pearl Brook, was intended to go with the house, and Lot A was being cut off as its own lot, which I believe it had the hundred feet of frontage, so it sort of ran along that gravel driveway. So, he's erasing that and retaining.
So, the bottom line is he's undoing something that he'd previously done with us.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be any frontage issues or anything?
Right, I mean, it's never really an issue to combine-
What's that?
It's never really an issue to combine, right?
No, it's not, no. Unless you're taking land from someone else, and then it's a matter of whether or not they-
But it's all under his ownership, the property records in the back show that-
Correct, yes, this is essentially, you're, it's erasing a lot line that he had created previously.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve the A&R.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's still the thirteenth.
And I am still out. They got a new logo.
Yeah, I didn't recognize it.
That's the "we ran out of cup, so we took it from our other shop" logo.
When you get Zetas, we have to do it. All right, well, that wraps up our items, agenda items, um, the, um-
That's some of your A&Rs.
The A&Rs, yeah, so we have a site plan approval for a waiver request?
Yep.
Thirty-nine Mass Ave.
Do you want to come up and tell them about it?
Yeah, just state your name and your address for the-
I'm Robert D. from D. Bus Service, and, uh, we purchased thirty-nine Mass Ave, and we'd just like a waiver to extend our parking lot, pave a little bit more of the parking area there to park more buses for the, for service to town Lunenburg with.
So, I'm assuming the waiver is increase impervious?
Cool, well, he's asked, um, to consider the paving as a waiver. Uh, I believe when we spoke, you had talked about, uh, yeah, forty by fifty feet, so, you know, a fairly minimal increase in the impervious area adjacent to an existing impervious. Uh, so he's asking for a waiver from the public hearing requirements and the filing requirements in order to pave that small strip.
And are there, are there any, any other issues that we should be thinking of? I mean, as far as, um, total lot impervious, uh-
No, there's, there's no, I mean, obviously drainage is always an issue. Uh, it's a two hundred square foot total, um, per the, the request. The board could condition, uh, whatever they wish as part of the, the waiver. Uh, you probably know better than I, there are multitude of solutions that could be easily done that don't need to be engineered, that would handle the runoff that would come off of a forty by fifty strip of pavement to be able to park a couple more buses. Uh, whether it's an infiltration trench with gravel, whether it's a grassed swale, uh, any of those things can be done to reasonably negate the, the runoff issue.
But I don't think if-
What is in the front right now, between the paved area and the road?
Hard pack gravel. It's, uh, I mean, or dirt.
Well, it's a, yeah, he's got a planting bed right along the road.
Planting bed?
Yeah.
Oh, along the road, yeah.
Yeah.
So, does the, would the planting bed serve as adequate, uh, water infiltration for that additional pavement? I mean, basically, we turn a hundred percent of the lot into paved surface.
I don't believe you're looking to pave that whole dirt area, are you?
I don't know what you're-
Uh, we're looking at the, the aerial, so that brown area is currently dirt and is, is larger than forty feet.
Right.
Fifty feet.
I would love to pave it off. Not ready at the moment, but no, we'd only come over, it's about-
Two bus widths?
Three bus widths over, and then in, and then-
So, you-
How long is a bus?
Forty feet long.
All right, so, this is forty by fifty.
Actually, bark mulch.
Oh, okay.
Towards the road, it's probably like twenty, it comes in twenty feet, twenty feet from the road of bark mulch.
So, there's no storm sewage in that area?
Correct.
So, we're looking at just a rough incising. We're looking at something of this nature. Let me just take a look at this and tell me if my drawing is accurate of what you're talking about paving?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you scale it off with the three buses that are there-
I just scaled it off with the buses.
Yeah.
And this is what I get.
Yeah, you guys are about the same, just in different directions.
Right, yeah. So, are you going to, uh, are, are you planning on putting pavement all the way to the property line on either side? Or is it, is the, just asking, are you going to continue a buffer strip here and here? Or is this going to go all the way to this property line, or what was your plan there?
Off the property line, um, probably like ten feet off, fifteen feet off the property.
All right, so, so there'll be a fifteen-foot non-paved buffer-
Yep.
Between the property line and the pavement.
Yeah, I think that's approximately what it is.
Nice job on the landscaping.
Oh, thank you.
It's coming along. He's already put a retaining wall on-
Yeah, yeah, it's a light, small retaining wall for the property lines.
Kind of cleaned up mess, sort of-
I was, I was gonna take a picture and bring it with me, but I didn't quite have the time to.
And the grade there-
Changes pretty-
Is based on, what's that?
It changes a little bit, doesn't it?
Well, it's flatter in that area, so as far as runoff goes, it, the rest of the lot kind of runs down towards the marina, but that particular area is pretty flat.
And I know into the right, to the right side, well, if you're looking at the building, the end, there is some drainage down in the corner of the, at the end of the building.
Okay.
So, you, you're just asking for a waiver from site plan approval?
Because in the site plan bylaw, it says if you extend, alter, modify a parking lot outside of regular maintenance, it requires site plan approval. So-
You can pave without it.
In, in the instance of Asian Imperial where they created a significant addition to their parking lot, that was a, you know, that was something that, that needed that full site plan approval. You know, I, I wouldn't say that you couldn't make an argument that something like this may need that. Uh, I think that this is an instance where, considering the waiver is something that was reasonable to suggest to Mr. D. because, again, it's a two hundred square feet on a, you know-
Two thousand.
Two and a half acre parcel that already has, you know, seventy percent impervious, you're not- The percentage impervious increase and the ability to mitigate that increase would be fairly easily done without a significant amount of engineering.
All right, so, I, I'm okay with this, but Matthew, I'll defer to you on what you would recommend for, um, some kind of mitigation, whether that's a trench surrounding the newly paved area or some kind of a swell or-
Well, I think as far as mitigation, as long as the new paved surface pitched noticeably to the, or at least pitched towards to the impervious areas, because like I said, there's no street drainage in that area, and, um, so any excess runoff would be captured by the road because it, it does pitch towards the road in that area. Or it may pitch, it also pitches towards the, um, the adjacent lots too, towards Fitchburg, so-
I was gonna say, there's curbing going along the road.
Is there a curb there?
Yeah.
Along the whole road.
That whole landscaped area in.
Whole landscaped area is all curbed.
Yeah, um, you know, maybe even, it would be unreasonable to have a speed bump there to make sure that none of that water came in?
Like a berm on the, on the street side?
No, um, on the page, on the portion that doesn't have a curb.
So, put a berm on the edges of the pavement that, where it crosses from pavement to gravel?
That does seem a little unreasonable, driving a bus over a speed bump every time you want to park.
I don't think you want to do that.
No.
Yeah, I think having it pitched as practically as possible towards the rear of the lot makes the most sense.
Yeah. Well, towards the rear of the lot, I was thinking towards the existing landscaped area. The landscaped area to be retained because that way you can infiltrate.
Which is what it does anyway.
Right.
Are you planning on landscaping that area in general?
Uh, it's pretty much all landscaped.
Oh, the bark mulch area?
Yeah, yeah, that's all landscaped.
Would you be interested in putting in a rain garden? Which is basically just a hole in the ground with some vegetation?
Whereabouts?
I'm also on the Stormwater Task Force, and, and we're having to file our notice of intent for the town and our, and our Stormwater Management Plan and our MS four, um, and this, I'm sure, is regulated area. It's, it's basically just a ditch with, with vegetation. I, given the input that this is such a negligible increase, um, I'm inclined to say just pitching it towards the landscaped area would be adequate.
Okay, and it already has plantings, right?
If somebody else would like to weigh in-
Well, the, the backside is now a retaining wall, and then the side, so the side of-
So, this is a retaining wall right here?
Yeah, towards Abishon.
Yeah, it was a hill coming down.
Okay.
And then the side along Mass Ave, there's an elevated landscaped area, so there's no way the water's coming out into the road there.
Yeah.
The road elevation's higher than what he's looking to pave there. And it is pretty flat.
Yes.
I didn't buy and walk it, but just-
I mean, I've seen pooling over towards, up the road a little bit, but I've never seen any ponding in the road here.
No.
No.
So, I think in the whole scheme of things, it's, should work out all right. Now, there's still fence from like the corner of the building towards Abishon?
Yes. I'm gonna move that fence over.
Okay.
So, that, all the buses will be in the fence.
Okay.
Then at the top of our wall, I was gonna put like a post and beam fence up there just to keep people from-
Yeah, like split rail or something?
Yeah, split rail.
You mean, any further comments?
Okay, so, um, I can make a motion that we accept the, uh, accept the request for waiver. Do we want to put any kind of restriction on it, or we want to say that it's fine considering it's such a small improvement?
Well, my, my, my thought on the condition would be that it pitched towards the landscaped area, the new pavement.
I mean, you can make your waiver based on the condition that it does that.
All right, so I, I would move that we approve the, the waiver as requested, um, and, um, add a restriction that the new paved area should be pitched towards the existing landscape area to not add to the, the water that's already collecting on the existing impervious surface.
Second? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, thank you. So, you're new in town?
No, we've been renting there for years.
Okay.
We just purchased the building a couple months ago.
Very good, I just came from, uh, an year to kickoff meeting from the Lunenburg Business Association, newly formed in town.
Yep.
Now, that, is that whole lot part of this building ownership, including where the boats are parked?
It's two different lots.
Oh, two separate lots?
Yeah. We purchased both lots as one, but it's two separate lots.
Oh, okay.
Super.
Do I need anything from you guys?
No, we'll send you, we'll send you a letter, um, but you can go forth and pave.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, minutes approval. So, I believe I came in to look at these.
Well, those are the, those are the regular meeting minutes.
Okay, but I came in to see them. So, those are the same as properly shared with us and printed in?
Yes.
Okay. So, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of July ninth?
Yes.
We now have to move and vote on minutes again, right?
Yep, I move that we approve the minutes from seven nine eighteen.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then have, we all had an opportunity to review the executive session minutes?
I have. I move that we approve the seven nine eighteen executive minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. All right, um, committee reports. Um, community, Green Communities was Greg. Capital Planning has not met, Stormwater Task Force, we had a very short meeting with Mr. Himlin, our wetlands, um, consultant, and to go over the, uh, the basically just the changing of the dates on the notice of intent because of the, the year delay. So, basically, it was just changing the dates on the form. I don't believe any of the content changed, and I believe that that was forwarded off, um, for review by the selectmen, and eventually to be signed hopefully by the town manager. So, that was that. Agricultural Commission, uh, we were not able to meet last meeting due to lack of quorum. Um, we, the Agricultural Commission sponsored the last band concert of the season on July thirtieth. Um, it was a very successful turnout, uh, we managed to gain four hundred sixty-four dollars to donate to the, to benefit the 4-H in town, and I believe there are four different groups of 4-H. And the farmer's market continues to, um, to go move on well. Um, we had some issues with the weather last Sunday, um, yesterday. It was a slow turnout, um, we had a good turnout of the vendors, um, just not a lot of people willing to come out, and plus the Bolton Fair was last weekend too, so-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they did very good either.
But we have had an increase in, um, in vendors, I believe there's, there was twelve the week before that. So, we're moving right along with that as well.
And when does that run until, Matthew?
That runs until the end of October, I think the twenty-fourth.
Thanks.
And, um, MJTC?
MJTC, boy, we're packed, we had two meetings since our last opportunity to talk about MJTC. Uh, we had a meeting on July eleventh, and we had a meeting on August eighth. Uh, in the July eleventh meeting, um, so we went over the, the tip amendment, uh, and there was some confusion about the- about the, the numbers because it just didn't add up and the presentation didn't match the paperwork. So we did actually request that they, they redo it and republish for comment, but they went back and, and looked at the numbers and found that they had just created the presentation material from an old version and the new version was actually up to date, so what was presented at the meeting was different than what actually went out for review. So we, we let that one go. They also presented a roadway safety improvement report. It was a presentation and discussion. Provided, we provided feedback that the data that they're basing their decision on is old data and recommended that they change their, their approach in presenting the data such that they take into consideration the date of the data so that you take into consideration what projects took place since the data was collected. So like they will have a, a high safety area that has since had a traffic light put in, but they still will show that as a high safety area from the report and, and qualify it for additional funding even though it's already been addressed. So we just requested that. They, they put some compensation into the report for that. And the DOT is putting out a new trail guide in October, so the town has an opportunity to send trail updates to get into the guide, so.
I know the Conservation Commission has been working with them on, on getting trail data in there for.
Yeah, so it'll be nice because last, last time we had some trails in there, but a lot of them were not in there. And so we just had these incontiguous lines where there should have been contiguous lines.
There's a member actually outriding the trails with GPS to.
That's awesome.
Get them in.
In the August 8th meeting, we elected our new officials. Paula Bertram was elected for the vice chair position for the MJTC. That was great. And they presented the results of a Miriam Avenue, South Street bottleneck study. This is an update on the study that they're doing because this is the, the bridge up by Twin City Plaza, if I wear Bob's is and stuff like that. Apparently during the daytime hours, that is backed up significantly. It's a pretty bad area, so they're, they're looking at what can be done, but the, the biggest challenge that they have there is that bridge is limited to two lanes and there's nothing they can do to rectify that. So I'm not sure what they'll be able to do to, to address it. But anyway, there, there's a study going on for that and they'll be providing us updates on it in months to come. That was it, next meeting is in September.
Open space? Oh, that's Dave, isn't it?
Yeah.
And I think the next one, oh no, MRPC, is that also Dave?
Yep.
I attended the August 2nd meeting. A lot of the meeting revolved around issues that they've had with some grants that they're administering for Winjenin. They're going through a bit of a reorganization. They've lost a few of their staff and so they're a little bit short-staffed right now. But we are working on that permitting guidebook as well as the Lunenburg Business Partnership materials that they're helping with. Looking forward to getting that stuff underway.
Nice. Excellent.
Next meeting's September.
Okay. Oh, and also the next meeting of the Agricultural Commission is this Thursday. So have we had any input on the Try to Review Committee?
I have not seen any reports. I don't believe they've met, but I have not received any updates. I don't believe that the person in the audience is a part of that committee any longer.
Oh. Okay, very good. Moving right along to directors' items.
Okay, we're gonna go backwards because I'm feeling crazy tonight.
Okay.
Okay, actually, we're gonna start in the middle. We'll do the open space ad hoc committee. You remember the last time, no, I guess it was two meetings ago, the board voted to increase membership to seven members, adding a member of the rec committee and a member at large. We've received a single talent bank application from Sarah Cammer to fill the vacancy at large. Sarah served on the stormwater task force previously. She has a PhD in some manner of environmental science, is an educator and has extensive mapping experience.
GIS.
Yes, and she has worked, like as I said, with the, she's worked in consulting and with the stormwater task force on some mapping and phone application materials. She's been attending open space meetings and would like to put herself forward to fill that vacant seat. So it's up to this board as the open space ad hoc is a subcommittee of the planning board to appoint open seats that are not committee specific, so I guess I put Sarah forward as the only candidate who has responded to the advertisement for said vacancy.
And I will add that as Adam mentioned, she was a previous stormwater task force member and her membership there, her participate, her participa, participation was excellent. Her input was excellent. She was a very friendly and open person to work with. I think she would make a great addition to the open space ad hoc committee. Can I nominate her or do we need to nominate her?
Someone needs to nominate her.
Can, can the chair or the acting?
I mean, it's unusual, but it's not illegal.
I'll nominate the, the member that submitted.
Sarah Cammer.
Sarah, Sarah what?
Cammer.
Cammer.
Second?
Excellent.
All those in favor?
All of them.
Discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Welcome back, Sarah.
All right, then I guess we'll go to marijuana. Okay. So this is where it gets complicated. In speaking with the town clerk, the marijuana prohibition is not allowed to be placed on the statewide ballot, it needs to be on a local ballot. So it would need to be on a May ballot because it's a local initiative. So there's a couple of ways that this could be attacked. I guess more than a couple, but if, if the board wishes to continue with the bifurcated approach, they can just put a moratorium on for special town meeting with the intent that the prohibition bylaw and ballot initiative be held in close proximity in May at annual town meeting and at annual elections. And the regulations would be done for annual town meeting. They could move forward with the prohibition bylaw and regulation bylaw at special town meeting in the fall with the moratorium kicker in case things go pear-shaped during that meeting. And that would mean that we would have something on the books and then we would be waiting until May for the vote to certify the prohibition. I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to check in with council on how that would affect what happens. So if you, let's say we pass the prohibition and we pass the regulations because the prohibition isn't valid until the vote, would we be subject to the regulations in the interim between November and May? I would anticipate that we would be and anything that gets permitted under that would then become pre-existing non-conforming per the prohibition if it's, if it is supported at a ballot in May.
Or, or we could extend, extend till following May.
That was the, that was, that was option one is, is extend the moratorium.
Yeah.
Through to May, spend the winter doing the regulations and getting the prohibition set for the ballot and then just do it all at one special town, or one annual town meeting.
I think that makes the most sense.
I do too. Otherwise it's gonna be really complicated having a set of bylaws that are active for a short period of time until we come up to an election to override them.
Be really interesting though. Well, it also gives us time to, we're covered, we're not, we're not open and then it gives us more time to craft this bylaw.
Yeah.
Given that, given that this regulation prevents us from holding this at the election we were planning for, the, does that permit us?
I think the more, I don't, I think the moratorium will be okay.
Okay.
And I, you know, I think that the attorney general has supported extending moratoriums into June of next year, is very cautious about extending them any further. And I think that the logic behind the extension of the moratorium will hold up because the pursuit of prohibition requires the voting and I think that there's, excuse me, I don't feel as if I've heard a real middle-of-the-road, strong contingent. It's, hey, let's get pot selling here in Lunenburg or get that stuff away from us, we don't want it anywhere near town. It's not kind of like, oh, hey, it'll be fine, you know, everything will work out, let's just, you know, make it work. There's not a lot of that voice coming out.
Well, we hear that voice, but it's the people that want it.
Well, it is, but I, but I think that those people tend to be stronger on the, let's just get it going, let's do the regulations and allow it, or don't, don't let any of the businesses in town. And, you know, the reality is maybe there is a strong middle-of-the-road, but those are the people who aren't engaged, aren't speaking. So I think that we have a reasonable extension of the moratorium.
Agreed.
And then plus the two things that have to be agreed upon at the meeting and the, and the voting would be closer in proximity.
Correct, yeah, I mean, you're, you're getting a potential to engage more people. My one concern, and, and I don't think that this is necessarily marijuana related, but it's, it's paralysis by analysis, is the more time that we spend delving into this and trying to get input, we spin ourselves up so we think about, oh, what about this? And what about that? And I, I think it's important to just kind of try and rein all that in and focus on, this is where we want to get to, here's the things that we need to look at and not allow ourselves to be stretched trying to think of every conceivable scenario because we're never going to.
Can we put the, hmm, is there a way that we can use the town meeting to help in predetermining what the following town meeting results will be such that we could present the option that is going to be coming up for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
To get a straw poll or something from the audience?
I'm sure there's something that we can do.
That we could, because if town meeting overwhelmingly votes against it, then it's probably not worth pursuing. Because town meeting A and town meeting B are likely going to be 90% of the same people there because every town meeting I've been to, it's the same. For the most part.
You know, I think, I think that logic works mostly. My only, my only pause on that would be if there's a significant engagement that happens somewhere between December and April and there's a new pot of people who are for or against and they show up in droves to an open town meeting, you, I, I think you risk, you risk a flaw by not putting the prohibition on regardless of what, if, if it bombs in November and you say, well, then we don't need to pursue the prohibition bylaw, you create a potential vacuum where everyone shows up and votes down the regulations. Maybe there's a strong anti-contingent that can rally and if, if they don't have the option to prohibit one form of it, they just vote down all regulations.
I'm not saying that we would abandon putting it on the ballot, I'm just saying that it would give us an indication.
Okay.
The town meeting, which way the town meeting people are swaying.
That's fine, and I think that's, that's reasonable.
I don't think that we got a very good assessment from our.
From the monkey?
Yeah.
No, I, I mean.
Very accurate. I'd much rather get a straw poll at a town meeting.
Sure.
To get a feeling and if there's overwhelming response one way or the other, then, and if it's split right down the middle, that tells us something too.
Sure.
But if it's overwhelming one way or the other, then that gives us a stronger indication than we get. Plus, we, we get to have discussion about things that we couldn't discuss in the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Like, like how people feel about certain aspects of it or other aspects of it and maybe clarify zoning concerns where it seemed like some people might not have understood what the zoning differences meant.
I think that works.
All right.
All right.
So our thought process is we're going to town meeting just for a moratorium.
For the moratorium and maybe for a non-binding question of some manner.
Yeah, just to see what the feeling is.
Just to create some topic of discussion.
And parallel to that, we should be working on the actual regulations.
Correct, yeah, and, and I think that.
One thought I had on the regulations is, I mean, as we move forward, we now have essentially six uses if you count the five non-medical plus medical marijuana. If we could set time aside in a meeting to address just one use and say, you know, tonight we're gonna talk about retail and that's it. And we just develop the retail stuff and then whether it's, you know, craft or.
Sure.
Cultivation or whatever, just for simplicity purposes. And I also feel like it would help people in town that are concerned about it come to a meeting. It's on the agenda. If you're concerned about retail and you don't want to have a marijuana shop in the center of town, then come to this meeting. And, you know, that way we can kind of focus the feedback from the community and focus our efforts and hopefully not have meetings that last till 11 o'clock at night because we're trying to tackle too much.
I agree, I think it's a great idea.
Yep. All right, so we got open space, we did pot. Try town, we can endorse those plans after the meeting when you guys have to sign the rest of your life away. Sign bylaw, you guys had asked to see what we had talked about previously and this came up back, must be back in the winter. And so on the second to last page, sorry, third to last page, under F, number four is the amendment that I crafted in response to the discussion about commercial properties being permitted a single freestanding sign without need for site plan approval. I think we had talked about 12 square feet with no less than a one to three ratio between the perpendicular sides. So you're not going to get a really long skinny sign, you're gonna get something that's appreciably a rectangle. And then, you know, it can't be more than 25, it's gotta be at least 25 feet from the road and 20 feet from the sideline and then it can't be illuminated.
Internally, externally, period?
At all.
At all.
So that's the, that's the by right sign, right?
Yeah, that would be allow, and then, you know, you go back to the standard stuff in the, in the bylaw for, for site plan approval.
And you get approved, yeah.
Correct, if somebody wants a larger sign or a lighted sign or.
Or a lighted sign, right?
Yeah.
So you could put up a sign that's not lighted under this and then come back and just get approval to get it lighted.
Correct.
The only concern I'd have about the 25 feet from the front property line is I know in certain areas in town, that front lot line is back quite a ways. And so, you know, just using a property I own as an example, our garage, which is the old Sozik garage, the split rail fence that goes along the road is the property line. So 25 feet in, I mean, you're, you're.
You're in the middle of your parking lot, yeah.
Pavement at that point. And so I, I know the, the thought process is we want to make sure we can allow people to put a sign up without interfering with lines of sight and accessing a property, but.
Yeah, so should it be 25 feet from the, from the pavement edge?
Well, I think, I think if you look at the bylaw, the, the signs that would go by site plan are 20 feet from the property line. So you're, you're not gaining anything by, even coming in on a site plan, you're still, you're, you're 35 feet from the edge of pavement instead of 40, but you're still, you're still a ways back. And the only way to get relief from that is to go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit dimensional variation.
So. Unless we change the bylaw.
Well, unless we, yeah, unless we delve deeper and, and this needs more work than, than this one section. This was sort of a Band-Aid to. This was sort of a Band-Aid to correct, you know, one thing right now, and being by right, adding that extra feet, the extra five feet, someone who's putting a sign like this in probably isn't going to go and hire a surveyor.
Yeah.
They're going to go and they're going to, my problem line's about here, get me, get me the tape measure, Johnny. And, and they're going to put the 25 feet down, and they're going to say, look, it's perfect.
Yeah, looks good.
And, you know, if the building inspector's comfortable with that, I think that's fine. It's more of a, you know, making sure it's not, you know, not saying it's five feet off the property line and having it actually be in the right of way, or, or something to that effect where it creates a safety hazard.
Yeah, this, I was just like looking at other references here, like if you look on the previous page, subsection two, it references 20 feet from the right of way, not 20 feet from the property line.
The right of way is the property line, for seeing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah. So the right of way is the lot within, within, which in the road resides.
Okay, so at the very least, can we reduce it from 25 down to 20, so at least it's the same?
Sure. I, I was trying to be conservative on the by right, just to.
I, I think it's still pretty doggone far away from the road. But at least it's a little bit better.
But, yeah.
Well, and the thought process, too, is it's a small sign.
Yeah. How much damage can it do?
Well, it doesn't obscure as much of a view.
Yeah.
And so that will go on for fall town meeting.
If the board so chooses.
And I think that we should put that off till we have a full membership for something like that. Any discussion about that?
I can just carry it on to the next meeting.
Yeah, we've got time.
I mean, I, I can.
Going to town meeting.
Yeah, it's easy enough to put on to town meeting, and it's.
All right, so just, you know, you mentioned that.
Yeah.
We all thought it was fine at 20 feet, and get the other.
You can mention it.
Pardon?
See, you can mention it, because he now wants to do when the full board is here.
Well, I won't be, I won't be here for that.
You're not going to. All right, and the last thing is earth removal. So tomorrow night, the selectmen are having a workshop on dumping the earth removal on you guys, mostly at my suggestion. Because I think, well, I, I think these permits are, are much more in the wheelhouse of what the planning board does than, than what the selectmen do on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, maybe 18 months ago or so, I suggested to them that ultimately it might be worth it for those to make their way over here, especially since oftentimes projects permitted by the planning board are exempt from earth removal. And so it, it eliminates some of that confusion back and forth. You guys look at these kind of plans all the time, you understand a butter's concerns, mitigation measures, that kind of stuff. So I gave you tonight some, a draft bylaw and some draft regulations. I don't expect any real discussion on this. This is more, I threw something together that I thought cleaned up some of the foibles of our current bylaw, added in some.
This is the current one right here, right?
No, that's the one that I put together.
This one?
Yes. This is, this is regulations that would go with the bylaw. So it would be a multi-tiered approach, so.
Oh, so this is all new?
Correct.
Okay.
I added earth fill into the bylaw, because that's potentially a huge issue, as far as people bringing in fill, how they put it, where they put it, how much of it they put, where it came from, all that kind of stuff. And I, I think you guys are probably used to this by now, the two of you who've been on the board for a while, and Tanner, you'll start to get used to this. I don't like to put a lot of, you have to give us this in the bylaw, because what we want can change, and changing the bylaw to change that is kind of a pain. So I like to pack a set of regulations on the back end, saying, here's the documents we want, here's how they get to us, and that way, if we do this for a year and we're like, you know what, we never use this one thing that we get, let's get rid of it, we really need this other thing, you can hold a public hearing to amend what you request from the documents, but it's still all within the bounds of, of meeting the requirements of the bylaw.
Okay.
So the bylaw, you know, says, here's what you have to do, here's why you have to do it, here's what we're trying to do, here's the parameters with which we're doing it in, and then the regulations say, and we want 12 copies of this plan that shows these things to show us why you meet these regulate, these aspects of the bylaw. They need to come in at this time, here's what the standards for restoration are, oh, those standards aren't working, or are, you know, excessive or, or unhelpful, or, you know, need to be changed, okay, let's change those to meet what, you know, what makes sense. As I said, these are drafts, no, they went to the selectmen today, I think, I don't know if, I don't know if the selectmen got them, I sent them over to the town manager late this afternoon and said, here you go, this is for tomorrow. If, if this changes, great. If it doesn't, great. It's just, it's sort of a place to start talking. And it, it's really just to try and move the conversation forward, because I feel like in the last probably 18 months, the selectmen have said, you know what, we've got earth removal happening in town, and we need to really get a handle on it. I think they've been relying on the building commissioner to do annual reviews for a long time, and those annual reviews have resulted in permits just being renewed and renewed and renewed, and I think they're being a little bit more fastidious about their review of the, the current permits and what the end game is for those permits and, and how they get exercised.
Now, is there a trigger point for this? In other words?
Yeah, I've got 1,000 cubic yards in there as the, as the trigger point for removal or, or, right now it's 10, which is, you know, if you take a dumper full of dirt out of somewhere, you technically need an earth removal permit.
10 single yards, not 10,000 yards.
No, 10 cubic yards. That, that's what the current bylaw says. I mean, so, and, you know, there are some exemptions for stuff associated with a building permit or a subdivision or, but, you know, that's, I, I think it's a bit draconian, and I think that really what, what I tried to get down to, too, and I don't remember if I put it in the bylaw or the regulations, is we have permits that have been issued for 60-plus years at this point. You know, upfront, tell us, how much material do you really have? Where are you going to excavate? How long do you anticipate excavating? And, you know, can you necessarily nail that all down the first time you come in for a permit? No, but you can come in with a, a thought and an estimate, and as you renew permits, you, you start to get a better idea, and you can start to really refine that. And I think that's sort of the direction the selectmen have started trying to move. And I think tomorrow's meeting is, is one to sort of talk about, you know, a proposal like this, with the planning board taking over earth removal, and I think some of it is, if the planning board takes it over, what does that look like? And, and what's the impact on existing operations as the approving authority shifts, and as, you know, the personalities involved with it shift, and, and the institutional knowledge and all, all that kind of stuff. So I, you know, I think that there's, there's some work to be done. I anticipate the selectmen in the next, you know, three or four months will probably renew or close out any existing permits. So they would be renewed until next August. So this isn't something that's going to happen, you know, out of the gate right away, but I would anticipate to see something like this bouncing around at an annual town meeting, with the planning board, you know, hitting the ground running as, as fall rolls around.
So the intent is to publish this, get it adopted, and then get existing businesses to comply?
Yeah, the.
Their permit renewed?
Well, the way that I, I kind of wrote it was that existing businesses.
Pretty, there's some pretty high bars.
Yeah, you know, I, I have them in there as three-year permits instead of one-year permits. I think that that just makes a little bit more sense. Coming back every year can seem daunting, and continuation of existing permits allows them to continue under their current permit for a period of, I think it's, you know, three years. And at that point, they come back for renewal of not more than two years. And so within that three-year period, they'd be notified that this is now in place, and, and you need to start moving into compliance with the requirements in here, and giving them that buffer to do so in, and not just spring in on them like, oh, surprise, you're coming in next month, here's a new bylaw you have to comply with, but looking to ease them into it. And, you know, earth removal permits, it, it's not like building permit, people don't come in and just get them. These are usually fairly large operations, or people who are starting to do something that would be a fairly large operation. You know, Keating is our, probably one of our largest landowners, and they have more land and more earth that they could remove than I think any of us would see in a lifetime still. So I don't believe that they would be going anywhere, but this would sort of give the town a better handle on, on what it's going to look like as they move forward and, and how things might work.
Got you.
So, question, who, who, like, the last one that I remember is the Butterfly Lane off Elmwood Road.
Yep.
That was, that was something that was allowed, that was permitted through planning, and they had to go and get an earth removal permit?
They did not.
They should have, though.
No, they should not have.
No?
Because under the current bylaw, they are exempt, because the removal of their earth was in conjunction with the approval of the subdivision and was preparation of the site for the construction of that road and a pertinent houses.
Which is essentially a loophole in the bylaw.
Right.
It's not a loophole in the bylaw, it's, it's actually, there's case law for it.
Right, yeah.
In which, if you are removing earth as preparation for the use of the site in a reasonable period of time, it's not an earth removal operation. Even if you process and sell that earth, the intent of that removal is not the earth removal operation, it's the preparation of site.
Exactly, but there's nothing binding to have, actually have you finish the site development, and therefore you can skip out on the earth removal permit by creating a, a, a site and getting it approved, and then remove all the, all the, the material, and then just abandon the project, and then you bypass.
I guess in theory, but I mean, the argument against that would be.
It was a loophole, and there was a lot of discussion about it back when we were talking about that.
When they permit, permit a Butterfly Lane, I would venture to guess, he probably spent $75,000 to $100,000 in engineering. So you're not really saving any money spending that much to permit a subdivision, and then to remove the earth and not build the subdivision, because if you were going to permit an earth removal operation, you'd probably spend half of that, because you're just permitting, how much earth do I have, what am I going to do with it afterwards, I'm trucking it off. You don't have to design a road, you don't have to design drainage, all that kind of stuff. So I don't know that it, it's something that someone would go through the exercise of spending that kind of money to, to design a project to permit, never mind going through the hassle of permit. Now, I, if I recall correctly, his permitting was pretty easy, mostly because it's a straight dead-end road on giant pile of gravel, so there's not a lot to really talk about, but on a more complicated site, it doesn't seem like that would be, and, you know, if you permit a subdivision and you take 10 years to remove the earth that it takes to prepare the site, then you get into an area where, okay, maybe that is an earth removal operation that will ultimately be a subdivision, as opposed to, I think he cleared that site in six months.
Yeah, I wasn't singling out that.
No, and I don't think, I don't think you are, I'm trying to draw a comparison.
But I was purely stating that the way that the bylaw is written is you can, you can bypass.
I guess in theory, yeah.
The only concern I would have is, is setting this up in such a way that it doesn't become burdensome for a lot of the smaller scope projects, like septic systems. I mean.
That's one of those ones that's exempt.
Okay.
And there's a series of exemptions, and, you know, septic systems is one of those ones that, how can you force someone to get an earth removal permit when they have to have a septic system?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, take a look through it, and, you know, there's, there's, I, I understand a lot of those concerns, and, and there's a whole set of exemptions for stuff, you know, under Title V, and stuff that's in the floodplain section of the bylaw, stuff that, that would appreciably make sense.
So what about the case where people have material delivered onto site and then sell it from the site?
That's not earth removal, that's retail.
Okay, that is, so I mean, you're, you're, you're putting soil, earth, and then you're removing earth from the site, but that's.
And, and I mean, I guess we could, we could talk about that. I, I, usually when you think of earth fill, you're changing the elevation or grade of the site.
Right.
So you're bringing it in, you're dumping it and spreading it. If you're filling a bin with loom, and then your customers are coming in and taking that loom out, that, that to me isn't earth fill, that's someone delivering a product.
So then shouldn't it say naturally existing somewhere?
And again, you know, again.
Oh, we'll go, we'll go.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure I have more.
I'm sure, and like I said, I, you know, I didn't expect there to be a big discussion about this, mostly because I, I dropped them on your seats before the meeting. And that's what I've got.
Very good.
You got your notices and communications scanned to you?
Yep. Meeting schedule?
Yep, so we have 994 Northfield will be coming back at our next meeting. All of you should make every effort to attend. No going to Kazakhstan, or Kazan, or wherever you might go.
I'm trying to avoid that trip at all costs. It's occurring in September, but I'm pretty sure I don't have to go now.
And then September and, and September are both fairly open right now. Oh, and I, I meant to send an email out, I will be out of the office next week, so if you have questions about solar and stuff, get me before Thursday.
All right.
Very good.
So then, is there any public comment?
No, wait, I'm sorry, on the meeting schedule, there was some kind of a special meeting that was supposed to take place on another night, is that?
Oh, no, there was discussion about that, I, I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, my apologies.
You're still public.
Okay, no point.
Any public comment? Seeing none. The ongoing items?
So Asian Imperial, I did speak with the DBW director, and I think what he's looking for is a letter from the planning board outlining that the remaining driveway apron is not something the board wishes to retain, and that it was not part of the site plan approval. And then he can, we can, I can inform the property owner that he'll be, that I'll be working with him to resolve the situation, then he'll come up with a solution. So is the board okay with that as the, the course of action?
This is the little strip that people are parking on, backing into the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're just going to put some, I assume they're just going to put something to block that off.
That would be my inference.
Yeah.
Either decorative guardrail or something to that effect.
Yeah.
It would be nice if they rip it up, just give them some more impervious, but, you know, what, it's no sense spending a lot of money on it.
It's town property, is that?
It is, it's in the right of way, and I think the concern is, that's a DOT-controlled portion of the intersection. And so, once they remove that, does it affect the integrity of the edge of road, and do they get into a battle of wills with DOT over who then needs to fix that, and?
Oh, maybe they could, so I cut it.
I was saying, they could cut it and leave a foot, yeah, or two, I mean.
Yeah.
There's definitely ways around that, to not have to worry about that.
Let Jack make that call. That's, and that's exactly what, you know, my feeling is, is it's, it's his bailiwick, I'm going to let him do what he thinks is the appropriate thing.
It is not part of the project, though, so.
All right, that's what I've got.
All right, we were told at the last meeting that there had been some response on the.
Yeah, they said that they would have their maintenance done by the end of next month.
So September?
So end of September. So written commitment of performance of required maintenance is enough to stave off.
So then what's next after that? So the maintenance gets completed, and then what happens? What does the town do to ensure that that road's not going to fall apart anymore? What does the town do to ensure that that road's not going to fall apart anymore?
That's out of my scope of practice. No, I...
It feels like we're dotting i's and crossing t's here, but...
The short answer is I don't know. Well, the idea is, we were brought into it as, this is potentially something that is contributing to the problem. So we do what we can to resolve what is within our sphere of influence.
Assigned with permits, yeah.
And then, if, I believe the DBW director is independently looking at what the impact of the other water source is, or the genesis of the other water source. If he's not able to determine that, I don't know what happens as far as legal aspect goes from there. I think the selectmen probably have some decisions to make on that. As far as the condition of the road, I would expect that the town would continue to work to ensure that the integrity of the road remains, and that, you know, prior to any final construction of it, that it, it's not going to be compromised. I think there's probably a variety of different options as far as retaining or slowing down the volume of water that's coming off, and what those are, you know, I wouldn't want to speculate, mostly because I'm not an engineer, but I think that there's some things that could be done, and what the cost or where they can be done, who would do them, again, I think is still undetermined.
Okay.
Economic development.
Well, you went to the same meeting I did. Town's still working with the Lunenburg Business Association to develop a map of Lunenburg, and, you know, how Lunenburg connects back to its business community and fosters some general relationship. I spoke with Karen Chapman, she said probably towards the end of September, she'd be back to see the board about the permitting guidebook. She should have a draft for us by then. There's been some staff reductions at MRPC, so their workloads have increased a little bit, and it's about where we are with that.
All right. Well, from what I gained from tonight's meeting, that in about a month and a half, the Lunenburg Business Association has gained a following of 130-something, 37 people on Facebook. There is a Facebook page for Lunenburg Business Association now. They had determined that there were, and I believe this was MRPC research, that there were 512 businesses in the town, which is darn near 5% of the population. It, numbers to numbers, that's considerable. I was surprised. And, what did I have for that? And then 8.3 Board of Appeals?
That's just the special permit timeframes.
Are we going to try to go back to fall town meeting and...
We certainly can.
I think we should.
Be a little better prepared.
I don't know how much better prepared I can be, but yeah.
I'm wondering what we can do for public outreach between now and then, because it's obviously a problem to the people who serve on this board.
Correct.
Well, it's, it's... It's obviously a problem to people that deal with the dealings of this board.
I think there was a misconception, and...
Disagree.
I think it's just a matter of having a bit more counter to that misconception.
My recollection at town meeting was, there wasn't much presented about what the state policy was.
Correct, there wasn't.
Can we...
We can, yeah, we can get a slide of what the...
Slide or something, to, just so we can kind of set the stage for it.
All right. Board comments or concerns?
Well, I guess I have a quick comment. One is, I'd like to see more of the public come out for the marijuana discussion, so I don't know what we can do to generate some feedback there, whether it's, you know, a post on Facebook just announcing the meeting, not getting into some sort of political discussion, discussing Lunenburg, but essentially just, you know...
We can post it on the town's Facebook and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we do take that approach of having, you know, each meeting, we focus on one topic...
Yeah, notice what date is for what meeting.
Yeah, and hopefully we can kind of get people's input on areas that concern them specifically, that would be good. And I'm a little bit concerned about charter review and our representation on that committee, because it is an important part of the town, and, you know, where we, our representative hasn't attended two out of the three meetings, and hasn't attended any of our meetings since he was reappointed, I'm a little bit concerned that we're not well-represented there. So, I don't know where we go with that, but I feel like it's hard to represent this board appropriately if A, you're not at the meeting, and B, you don't come here and provide feedback. So, wherever we go with that.
Valid concern.
I have one item, just, it's related to, it's related to planning, but also a little bit related to education, just something that I've noticed in my participation online. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the difference between an easement and land ownership, because I've been involved in discussions where people are propagating that they're basically one and the same, and referring to an exchange of land for an easement as a land swap. And I wanted to make sure everyone understood that, when you own land, you can do what you want with the land, as long as you're in compliance with the land regulations. But, an easement is the right to use a property for a specified purpose, and that purpose is established when the easement is established, and the users of that easement have no control over changing that easement over time. It's a, it's a one-time establishment, and even if you have permission to use it for a specific purpose and you want to change that purpose, you have no control of it, because the land is still owned by the original owner where the easement is established. And so I just wanted to make sure that people of the town understood that there is a difference between ownership of land being exchanged for ownership of land, and ownership of land being exchanged for an easement to access land. That's it.
Another valid point. And I got nothing.
Move to a jury?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.